Here we go. Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to our Wednesday, December 10, 2025, committee of the whole meeting. I will now call the meeting into order, and we acknowledge that we are in McMoggy, the ancestral unceded territory of the McMog people. Item 2.1, approval of the agenda. The recommended motion is that the agenda for today's meeting be approved as presented, unless there are any changes or additions. Seeing none, we're good. Motion to approve the agenda is moved by Council, Deputy Mayor Ghul, and seconded by Councilor Fromm. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary-minded, motion is carried. Thank you very much. I'll draw your attention to the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act whereby members are required to declare conflict of interest prior to any discussion on the matter. 2.3, approval of the minutes. The recommended motion is that the minutes of November 19, 2025, regular committee of the whole meeting be approved as presented. Moved by Councilor Lockhart. Seconded by Counselor Strong. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary-minded, hearing none, motion is carried. Thank you very much. Business arising, 2.4. Mr. Harret, you have the floor. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Your Worship. Business arising is a short list this month. It's on page seven of Council's agenda package, just a couple of items, rescheduling the December meetings, and we're living one of those now. And the other is creating a report on the issue well for drinking water in River Joggins, and it says that it's in progress. Certainly, I think it's fair to say it's in the public domain now that it's our hope that the construction of the yet-to-be-approved, but soon-to-be-approved fire hall in River Hibbert will include that in the specifications for construction, and so we're hopeful that that will be included as a solution when we construct that facility. So, very much in progress, very much a live issue, and we hope to get it solved.
Thank you very much, Mr. Harret. Anyone have any comments on that? Seeing none, we'll move along. 2.5, public hearings and presentations. We do have a presentation today. 2.5-1, recycling update from Brenda Ryu, the Solid Waste Education and Contract Coordinator. Go ahead, Brenda. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you. I promise I won't take too much of your time here this afternoon, but I was asked to come in and just basically give a brief overview of the changes with the new EPR program, Extended Producer Responsibility Program. So we'll just basically go over some of the highlights and kind of what that means for residents when they're placing their materials curbside. So Nova Scotia's transition to EPR began on December 1, 2025, so we're just a little over a week into the program and happy to report things are running quite smoothly and things are going well. But I'll start just to give you a little background, and I'm sure a lot of you have heard this and are familiar with what is EPR, Extended Producer Responsibility. So EPR is a policy approach in which producers, which are the businesses that supply the packaging and paper, are financially responsible and accountable for those materials. So basically, the full life cycle of the product. So what does that mean, or what's happening to Nova Scotia's Blue Bag Program? So Nova Scotia's EPR for packaging and paper products, it shifts the financial and operational responsibility from the municipalities to the producers. So that's basically what it's doing. It's shifting that responsibility, so the municipalities are no longer responsible for financially, the financial piece with the program or operating it. Okay? So who is included in the EPR program? So it's all residential properties. So in the municipality of Cumberland, we currently provide collection services to residential premises, which is anything with three or fewer units. So that will continue, and they are included in the EPR program, as well as some eligible facilities, which would be multifamily units. So that would be your apartment buildings. They can also sign up to be a part of the EPR program, schools, and campgrounds. So they're kind of separate from the residential in the sense that they have to register for that, similar to how the municipalities have, but just to let you know that those facilities are also eligible with the program if they want to sign up for it. What that means, eligible premises will receive unlimited curbside recycling. So in the municipality of Cumberland, residents did have an unlimited amount, I guess, of recyclables that they could place curbside, so that hasn't changed for the municipality. However, some municipalities and towns did have a limit to what they can put curbside, and now that limit has been lifted. It also means that there's no recycling tip fee that the municipality will be paying at the landfill site. So residential collection limits. This is just highlighting some of the changes, or lack of changes, actually. So as I said, there's no limit to what residents can place curbside, provided that those materials are properly sorted and placed curbside by our set out time of 7:00 a.m. Collection services. So it was important to us to have a seamless transition, so there's no changes to the collection services. As far as Miller Waste is still our collection crew, still have the same trucks, and residents will place their materials out curbside as usual. Curbside collection changes. Basically, the biggest change is that we can now add more items into our recycling bag, which is a good thing. Another thing that we're excited about, across the province, we're going to have a unified sort list. So before, depending on where you were located or visiting, you may be sorting a little differently. Some municipalities would recycle styrofoam, for instance. Here in Cumberland, we did not, but now we have a unified sort list across the province. So no matter where you are in Nova Scotia, you can place the same recycling products So residential recycling. So as everyone, I'm sure, is familiar, we have a dual-stream recycling program here in Cumberland County. We have a fiber bag and a container bag. So really, what I've done is just highlighted some of the changes to what you can place in each of those bags. So some new products that you can now put in your fiber bag would be your potato bags and pet food bags, so we can now recycle those. A big one, and with the season upon us, is Christmas paper, wrapping paper, and tissue paper, as well as gift bags. So those all now can go in your recycling fiber bag. So those are the main changes to the fiber bag. And now we'll look at the container bag. So with the recycling container bag, some of the new items that we can now put in there would be your paper laminates, so like your Pringles cans, frozen juice cans, where they were a mixed product, they had cardboard in the tin. Those products before were not recyclable, but we now can recycle them with the EPR program. Our coffee cans and ice cream containers all go in your recycling container bag. One of the big ones, I think, that a lot of people will notice is the hot and cold beverage cups. So I see some of you around the table have your hot beverage cups, so those now are recyclable. We do ask that you remove the lids, but both the lid and cup can go in your container bag.
Excuse us one second. Go ahead.
So it would be, as before, we do ask that you give products a quick rinse, when you can do that, such as your beverage containers, give them a quick rinse before placing them in your recycling bag. Some other products that we now can recycle are toothpaste tubes and deodorant sticks, things like that. So there are a few of those things that may seem a little odd. You can't obviously rinse out your toothpaste tube, but all they ask is that you make sure they're empty before recycling. So if it's a container that you can rinse, then give it a quick rinse, and if not, just make sure it's empty, there's no food product in that container. Some items that they are removing from the program are books. So of course, we would certainly encourage donation first. So if you can donate books, then that's what we would like to see happen, but if not, they will go in the garbage. And that's just because they're not a designated item with the new program, so unfortunately, they're no longer considered acceptable in the recycling bag, as well as pots and pans. So here, we were one of the few municipalities that did recycle pots and pans, but now, moving forward, we will not be able to recycle them. So if you cannot donate them, then they would just go into the regular garbage as well. The last kind of section to go over is materials that are part of a drop-off program. So this is new to residents in Nova Scotia, that we can now recycle styrofoam, which is great. However, some of these products listed here are to go back to a drop-off location. So it would be styrofoam, flexible plastics, such as your chip bags, candy bar wrappers, coffee pouches, those type of products, as well as non-hazardous aerosols. So your aerosol cans as well, hairspray and deodorant. The kind of tricky thing with the drop-off locations, we only have two currently in Cumberland County. They are located in Joggins and Pugwash. So Circular Materials does realize there's gaps in the drop-off locations, the drop-off centers, so they are working to improve those, that we have more locations. So what we're doing to educate residents, if you can take it to a drop-off center, that is certainly the preferred method. However, we realize that's not necessarily feasible for everyone to do, so for the time being, until we have more drop-off locations secured, residents can continue to put those materials in their regular garbage. So drop-off is the preferred method, however, if you're not able to take them to a drop-off center, then they can go in the regular garbage until we have more of those drop-off centers Just the next slide. So what residents can expect? Basically, we can expect provincial harmonization, which again, I said, is a really good thing, I think, for our province, that we have the same rules and regulations when it comes to recycling. Just to let you know what we've done as far as education, we have updated our Solid Waste app, which we have a lot of users that like to go on that app, Cumberland County Solid Waste, and you can search products and find out disposal options for those products. So that app has been updated to include the new items that are now recyclable. We have also revised our current sort guide. So this is just a picture showing you that the new sort guide is out there, and we will be mailing it when residents request it. We're also looking to have that placed on the websites as well, so that it's a quick reference for residents. One other thing just to mention, we did meet with, staff did meet with Miller Waste, our collection contractor, just to go over the new rules and regulations and our expectations with respect to stickering materials and that sort of thing. We're now in the transition phase, so we just kind of had that conversation, what the expectations are with what you may see in your recycling bag moving forward. And that is the quick overview on the EPR program. And if anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them.
Thank you very much, Brenda. Counselor Strong, followed by Counselor Lockhart, followed by Counselor Fromm. That's the order we will rotate in. Go ahead, Counselor Strong.
Thank you, Your Worship. Yes, I was just wondering, in where I live, in Advocate Harbor, we use clear bags, not blue. Is that still something that's okay for?
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted to confirm.
They do, provincially, they typically refer to it as a Blue Bag Program.
Okay.
But we do allow both blue and clear non-colored bags here.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Counselor Strong. Counselor Lockhart, go ahead.
Thank you. Hopefully, I don't have the garbage police after me after this. But so at home, I always consider the other bag to be plastics and cans and, you know, things like that. So that, their cup, we were just discussing this beforehand. So the last week or so, I've been rinsing the cup out and throwing the lid in the plastic bag, and throwing the cup in the fiber bag, but I guess that's wrong, that they would all go into the other bag.
The container bag, yes.
Yeah, yeah. So we haven't cut any of the plastics out, like, that are recycled.
No. So you, it's basically more.
Yes.
You can add to the bag, but with the exception of the pots and pans are being removed and the paper, the books, but for the most part, we're just adding to those bags.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
No problem.
Counselor Fromm.
Your Worship. Just a quick question, the drop-off centers. Will there be any, like, I'm kind of wondering about seniors that don't drive, or no matter how many you put around, what will happen for people who can't access them?
It's a good question. We certainly expressed our concerns when the drop-off centers were even part of that conversation with Circular Materials, because we wanted to keep materials that you can place curbside. We wanted to continue with that. Unfortunately, some of these products currently are not, I guess, designed to be going to our current facilities. So there is a plan to have a super MRF, shall we call it, a large MRF that will handle all the materials. I think once that is secured and constructed, then there will be some changes. So some of these items that currently we're saying will have to be taken to drop-off centers may be able to go to curbside. But that certainly is a concern that we have expressed, but I don't have, I guess, a complete answer on what will happen, but...
It's always the ditch issue, what ends up in the ditch instead of going to where it's supposed to go.
Yeah, exactly. Counselor Lee, go ahead.
Your Worship, thank you. Just a quick question around these distribution centers. When you bring it in, is the expectation that you will post the hours when these places are open, if people have things to bring there, or will it be up to the business who is hosting the...
The drop-off center?
Yes, please, sorry.
We would post it and share that information, but it would be up to the drop-off location to post that as well. Like, they would post their hours at operational.
Your Worship?
Go ahead.
Just another quick question. So expectation is, if that's happening, you would just go in and there would be like a dumpster or something? Is that the idea of how it works? Like, I'm just asking out of curiosity.
Sure, yeah, no problem. It would be similar to, I think, if you were to go to a depot right now, like in Enviro Depot, for instance, to take back your refundables, you would have it bagged and drop them off, and they would have bins for those materials there.
Thank you so much.
Anyone else? Go ahead, Mr. Harret.
Thanks for doing this, Brenda. Really appreciate it. Thank you. Just a quick question on the, early on in the presentation, you talked about owners of multi-unit apartment buildings being able to opt into the program.
Yes.
And we don't include those properties in our residential collection program. So how do those folks opt in?
So Circular Materials has been reaching out to those properties, and they have different deadlines when they can register. So I believe the next one is May, because it just finished in November, and then if they register in May, then they can have collection. I feel like it's November it would start, so there's that time period, so... But they are reaching out to those businesses and sectors.
Thank you. I just, I wanted to clarify that that, our program, our collection program isn't changing. Those multi-unit buildings above three units and more still aren't part of our collection stream, but they do have the opportunity to make an agreement with Circular Materials themselves.
Yes, for the recycling, yes.
Thank you.
Awesome. So just to sum it all up, for the residents who are watching, will inevitably be messaging us and asking questions and whatever, as to what's the simplest and easiest way for them to obtain the list of things and where they go?
Currently, I would say on our Solid Waste app, the Cumberland County Solid Waste app, but we are looking to have that new sort guide posted on the municipal webpages shortly.
Perfect.
It was just finalized this week, so take a few days and we'll have it up there.
Awesome. Thank you very much. If no one else has any questions or comments, thank you very much, Brenda, and we certainly appreciate your time here today, and we look forward to this new program, to say the least. So it'll make a big difference.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brenda.
3.1, Audit Committee Policy. Amy Hurdle, Director of Finance, will lead us on this next item. Come on down. The price is right. Yep. Set the table for the speed dial. Eight to twenty-three.
Thank you, Your Worship. I'm bringing forward today a draft Audit Committee Policy, which will, if passed by council, replace the existing Audit Committee Terms of Reference Policy 2204. In accordance with the MGA and regulations located in the FRAM, there, we do have an existing policy, and it contains a number of detailed duties and responsibilities that already exist in the requirements set out in the provincial regulation. The primary function of the Audit Committee is to assist council in fulfilling their oversight responsibilities related to quality and integrity of financial reporting, along with ensuring the appropriate systems and controls for the paper recording of transactions and protection of assets that are in place. The draft policy is really just updating that to the regulations and referencing to the MGA and the regulations for the requirements. In your package, you will find the Draft Audit Committee Policy 2505, and the reason we're repealing the old one and replacing it is there were substantial changes, so trying to amend it would have been challenging. There is also the existing policy attached and excerpts from the FRAM, which is the financial reporting and accounting manual, that contain kind of the details about the responsibilities of the Audit Committee. Your Worship.
Thank you very much. Amy, the recommended motion is that council forward the Audit Committee Policy 25-05, including the repeal of the existing Audit Committee Terms of Reference Policy 22-04 to the December 17, 2025, regular council meeting for consideration, if somebody would like to make that motion. Moved by Counselor Strong and seconded by Counselor Lockhart. Any comments or questions on any of this from council? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Contrary-minded, the motion is carried. Thank you very much, Amy. No business issues on today's agenda. External reports and committee minutes. 5.1, Navigator Monthly Report. 5.2, Solid Waste Monthly Report. 5.3, Cumberland Public Libraries Monthly Report. 5.4, Cliffs of Fundy GeoPark Monthly Report. 5.5, Cumberland Business Connector Monthly Report are all included in your meeting package, and I leave them to your reading pleasure. Six, internal updates, reports, and committee minutes. 6.1, Administration Department Monthly Report. Mr. McCracken, our Deputy CIO, will now lead.
Thank you, Worship. The Administration Department November Report begins on page 33 of your package. Just a few highlights in terms of human resources, always lots going on there. One particular highlight is we now have a Human Resource Strategic Plan document, and we shared that with the management group today, and so that'll give us some guidance in terms of attracting and retaining quality employees for the next five or six years. In communications, just one thing to draw your attention to amongst the bulleted items there, we've completed the Fall and Winter External Newsletter, which I would say is one of the best ones we've had yet, so I encourage you to read that and share that around your communities. In occupational health and safety, doing lots of training with employees around things such as traffic control, temporary workplace signage, first aid, electrical safety, rigging and hoisting, so we're trying to instill or provide the training opportunities that are either legislated or that we recommend for our employees to be safe at work. For information technology, we continue to be very conscious of our cybersecurity, and our cybersecurity score continues to drop, which is a good thing. It's like golf, the lower the score, the better. And compared to organizations like ours, like public sector organizations, we're doing quite well with a score of 620, where the average for other organizations is 750, and that's no small part to the work that our IT services team is doing. For community engagement, we have completed a draft training plan for employees, which is around equity, diversity, inclusion, and accessibility, which is an action in both of those plans. And then finally, we have entered into the lease with Canada Post, and it's going well, lots of foot traffic coming in the front door, and people in Spring Hill are much happier to pick up their mail there than having to drive to Amherst. And then I'll just draw your attention to the district funds. You have a few months remaining to spend those funds or allocate those funds, and there's some stats on customs service on page 36. Happy to take any questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. McCracken. Does anyone have any questions on this? Seeing none, thank you very much. 6.2, Development and Planning Monthly Report. Mr. Boone, our director, will lead us through this.
Thank you, Worship. Good afternoon, council and staff, and those who may be watching online. Report is in your package. Just a couple of quick highlights from each of the sections. Obviously, we did note in the report, our planner, Kira, actually made the first presentation to council last week, and we're going to keep her rolling next week. Dylan Consultant is our Plan Review Lead Consultant. They've completed their background work, and they're working on some technical memos on each of the specific areas of concentration. I think when Dylan was here and presented to council, they highlighted some of those areas, but housing being one, and work along coastal protection being another one of the main ones. Just should note that the report starts on page 37, if anyone that may be following at home. We are working with the Cliffs of Fundy continuation. Both Eileen and I attended their annual general meeting, and they had a community engagement session right after that. That was in late November. We are working, we'll be in next month's report to talk about the tie-ins conference we just attended last week, but in your package, you'll see we did make a donation with local products to the tie-ins fundraiser, which was to help scholarships. We'll talk more about that next month, but I'll let you know that the Cumberland product basket was a hot commodity in the silent auction, so great to see people supporting that, for sure. And then just move, Your Worship, to Special Projects, Geothermal, the Research Advisory Committee met in November, some members of council attended, and the fiber installation and the rural broadband continues to progress positively, so we keep in regular contact with Explorer that is doing that work, and have had several conversations with them with regard to some items that were raised by residents in respect to satellite coverage, so we have been working through that. In the GIS section, updates to the zoning mapping and our LAMA software was a big focus over the last couple of months, and happy to report that some of those updates are now active in the system, really important to that process. And on the permitting side, we have 208 housing units a year to date that have been applied for or are either complete or under construction, and that exceeds our levels of 197 and 170 in 2023 and 2024, respectively. A lot of that was led by some growth at Fox Harbor, which includes some staff housing. And overall, permits year to date, in totality, 824, pretty much on par with last year, only about a decrease of 1.87%, so we're just talking about a handful of permits. So 839 last year to 824 this year. Happy to answer any questions, Your Worship, council may have.
Thank you very much, Director Boone. Anyone have any questions on this report? Seeing none, thank you very much. 6.3, Finance Department Monthly Report, Director Amy Hurdle. Welcome, Amy.
Thank you, Worship. Under financial, so there was an Audit Committee meeting, which you all are aware of. On November 25, we reviewed the first two quarters of the '25-'26 fiscal year. Everything looked pretty good. The work on the budget has started in all departments, as my fellow directors would attest to. Payroll, we're starting to work on T4s, getting ready for the year end. Property taxes, we're continuing to process low-income tax exemptions. We are within budget at this point, so that's good, and with only a month to go. So we do, the deadline for those applications are December 31, so if there's any floating around out there, get them in to the public. We, you'll recall, we just held a tax sale in October, and we are starting to get ready for the one in March. There's timelines that need to be followed for those tax sales, so you almost immediately start into the next rotation, so we're getting ready for that, and there's some service center information in there.
Thank you very much, Amy. Anyone have any questions on this report? Seeing none, thank you very much. 6.4, Protective Services Department Monthly Report, Director Alan Cole. Go ahead, Mr. Cole.
Thank you, Your Worship. There were, unlike the beginning of December and November, there were no significant weather events to report. There will be some in my next monthly report for December. For Fire Services, call-outs... For fire services, call-outs were pretty much in the normal range. When discounted for mutual aid, we had 81 call-outs in November, 63 percent of which were medical calls. Pugwash was the busiest department with 22 calls on its own. The, as council is aware, on November 26, council confirmed the decision of the Chief Administrative Officer to close the Jogins, or not to re-register the Jogins Volunteer Fire Department and combine the River Hibbert and Jogins Fire Districts. I'm happy to report that everything is progressing as per normal in that now combined fire district. The River Hibbert Fire Department is doing a great job. Bylaw, the statistics for the month are on page 46, Your Worship. There was an uptick in canine control cases, and other dummies were pretty much in the normal range. Happy to take any questions, Your Worship.
Thank you very much, Director Cole. Does anyone have any questions or comments on this report? Seeing none, I will make one. In regards to the recent tragedy in Wallace with the Aquashell fire, I want to say a personal thank you to yourself and Kendall, and to all the Cumberland County Fire Departments and firefighters that worked on this fire this week, and basically did the most fantastic job that could be called upon in that time, under very difficult circumstances. And certainly, they mitigated what could have been a much, much larger loss with their quick actions and their professionalism. And I think that speaks to all of our departments throughout the county, and I'd like to thank them, so. Thank you very much, sir.
I take a special acknowledgement to Chief Tom Flynn for his work in marshaling all of the mutual aid fire departments that came to assist. He did an outstanding job.
Awesome, and I agree with that, too. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Cole. 6.5 Public Works Department Monthly Report, Justin Walcriss. You now hold the floor.
Thank you, Your Worship. We wrapped up the Parsborough Water Line Replacement Project in the month of November, and got all the streets repaved and all of the residents off of temporary water and on to normal utility service. We finished that up. The Parsborough Public Works crew completed the annual unidirectional flushing, and got good reports from that, that some of the areas that were historically difficult to flush cleaned up well. We got a few last-minute loads of asphalt in to patch up the remaining curb cuts, road cuts in Spring Hill and Parsborough, and got things ready for winter with some Christmas decorations on Main Street in Parsborough and Spring Hill, and got to test out our snowplows.
Thank you very much, sir. That's a fairly snowy report, as we all know, compared to last year. Anyone else have any comments on this? Councillor Lockhart, go ahead.
Yes, I'd like to thank Justin and his crew for last week. The snowstorm came and the parade that evening or the next day following, and the great job they did cleaning up, and I know how much it was appreciated by all the residents. And also, a special shout-out to people at Spring Hill Public Works for their work on, and Kathy Kuhn, I know, was involved in this, the work on getting those snowflakes re-designated and up, and all the good comments about those. I want to thank you guys very much for that.
Very good, thank you very much. Councillor Lee, go ahead.
Your Worship, thank you. I just wanted to say thank you. I don't know that people necessarily see you and the crews and what you do in our area, but I do know there was work being done, I believe, in Jogins. I did want to share, I had seen you get the trucks from the municipality in and out quite frequently, so I knew there was work happening somewhere. So seeing in here the pump rebuild and installation, but, you know, thank you, Your Worship.
You're welcome, Councillor Lee. Anyone else have any comments? Councillor Strong, go ahead.
Yes, I'd just like to say thank you as well. Parsborough looked really festive with the tree lighting, with all of the lovely snowflakes and the snow at the same time coming down, but it looked really, really magical. Thank you very much.
Very good, thank you.
Very welcome. Lots of long hours with staff to clear that snow and get things ready, so thank you for your acknowledgement, really appreciate it.
Awesome, thank you very much. Seeing none, thank you very much, Mr. Walcriss. Appreciate it. 6.6 Recreation and Community Services Department Monthly Report, Ally McCormick, our Director, will now lead us through this.
Thank you, Worship. First, I'm looking forward to all of my thank-yous after my presentation as well, so you can all think of things to be thankful for.
Wow.
So, included in your council package, you'll find our monthly report for the Recreation Community Services Department, and I'll just highlight a few updates. So the municipality is hosting several events over the holiday season, including the Parsborough Holiday Skates. I think we have about four or five of those happening just before Christmas and going into New Year. The Parsborough Seniors Christmas Dinner is tomorrow evening, and we're also hosting the New Year's Eve Party at the Dr. Carson Mary Murray Community Center. We also have public skates that are running at both the Parsborough Lions Arena and the Dr. Carson Mary Murray Community Center. So we're offering plenty of recreational opportunities for residents to be able to get out and enjoy the winter, the winter months. So for more information on these events and programs, we encourage people to go to our website or go to the Facebook pages of our Cumberland Recreation Page and our Dr. Carson Mary Murray Community Center Facebook pages. And finally, just an update on capital work at the campground. The electrical upgrades are nearing complete. We've been working on upgrading and replacing the aging infrastructure of the lines on the seasonal campsites, 46 to 48 and 55 to 68. So with new electrical underground lines and a new shed that's being added to the area, it's certainly going to, just another wonderful improvement for us to have down at the campground. And we expect these to be completed by mid-December. Happy to answer any questions or receive any thanks, I guess.
Anyone have it? Councillor Lockhart, go ahead.
Thank you for all the hard work and the arena staff for what's a great event last week for the Santa Claus Parade and pictures with Santa. And Councillor McCormick and the mayor, we had a great time giving out the hot chocolate, and just want to thank all your staff for the great, another great year of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Worship. Pass out long.
I'll echo that, too. That was really good. It was very well done, and I know a lot of effort went into it. But the kids had a great time with the treat bags and all of the goodies that were done afterwards, too, so. In spite of the weather, it worked out perfectly, so, yes. Anyone else?
Thank you, Ally.
Thank you very much, Ally.
Thank you, thank you.
Appreciate it, thank you. 7.1 Information Items, Contracts Awarded by the CAO.
Your Worship, there were none.
I was wondering why there was a blank page at the end of this report. So that means we didn't spend any money, right?
That would be, no. Just means that I didn't award any big contracts.
Okay, there you go. Okay, we have a motion to adjourn, moved by Councillor Fromm, seconded by Councillor Lee. We are now adjourned, thank you very much, folks.